The Board of Education will come to order. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
I move to enter into executive session to discuss personnel, legal negotiations, and property acquisition issues. Article 24, Section 4-210A, 1, 5, 8, and 11.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The Board will now enter into executive session. The Board of Education will reconvene at this time. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please turn off your cell phones if you haven't done so already. Like to introduce a couple people this morning. We have Anna Loughlin with us, who's the President of the Education Association of St. Mary's County. Good morning. And we also have Liz Purcell-Luskinen, Maryland State Education Association Uniserve Director. Good morning. And we have Harold Siskin this morning, who's the co-president of the St. Mary's County Public Schools Retiree Association. Welcome, Harold. And staff, welcome. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Board reports. Peter.
I just want to talk about, I know yesterday, there was the Captain Walter Francis Duke groundbreaking ceremony yesterday in town, as well as the St. Mary's Association of Student Council's first General Assembly meeting of the year. And what that is, is the student government of every school in the county, public and private, coming together as the General Assembly to talk about student-related issues and things that concern the Maryland Association of Student Councils as a whole as well. In the meeting, we had Mr. Carlo, the Executive Director of Southern Maryland, of the Southern Maryland Food Bank, talked to the General Assembly about the food bank and volunteering and helping out with the food drive that we're going to be having as the schools in Southern Maryland, as well as our St. Mary's County's own President of the Maryland Association of Student Councils, Devin Osborne, talked to us about some of the problems we have, some of the issues in Maryland. She also described what we were, as a board, were talking about, common core, and describing that to the students, so we had a better understanding of really what that means, as well as we revised, making some revisions to the Constitution by the approved changes by the General Assembly. So that was a, I was unable to attend. I was at the groundbreaking ceremony as well, but I also gave my report of what we've been doing at the Board, talking about common core as well. All right. And I also want to say a couple things about student bullying. And I want to focus a little more on cyberbullying as well, because it seems like nowadays, just about every week, teenagers and people go to school. We use like almost a different social media website, a different one, and we all use it every single week, so it's a little hard to keep up sometimes. And the main thing that StopBullying.gov, the program that's nationally to try to inform students and children about bullying, really wants to enforce, to keep parents on, in the loop, on the social weenie of the year going on, and what's really going on, whether that's trying to friend a parent so they know really who's talking to you and who you're talking to, so when things happen on social media, you're not alone and by yourself in the conversations. So that's my Board report. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Very nice, John.
Mrs. Crosby.
I went to the Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School groundbreaking ceremony. Dr. Marterano would like that, would like us always to refer to it with its complete name instead of Duke. So I'm saying it now on television, so I shouldn't hear anybody say Duke. Well, you gotta say it.
That's right.
All right. What I want to say is, after reading through all this, and everybody that was here did such a good job with opening remarks, with their speeches, I did want to say that, and what really struck me is, he is a true hero, a true hero. When the war broke out, he went over to Canada, because we weren't in the war until the bombing of Pearl Harbor, December 7th, 1941. And what did he do? That's the question. What did he do to get to be so famous? Well, he shot down Japanese planes when his wingman, that's the person that's behind you, wasn't there. He went back to get his wingman, and that's when he was shot down, on June 6th. And I'll remember that forever. That's my son's birthday. He got, and just, I'm going to say some of the things he got, because it's dag on a press. He got the Distinguished Flying Cross, the Purple Heart, the American Defense Service Medal, the American Campaign Medal, the Canadian War Medal, the Silver Star, the Air Medal, the Pilot Wings, the Unit Patch for 10th Army Air Corps, the Royal Canadian Air Force Dress Pilot Wings, the CBI China India Burma Theater Patch, and the Burma Star. I don't know, you know, you gotta say he's a hero, all the way from the top, all the way to the down, and there's, there are a lot of other things, but I'll give my colleagues a chance to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Crosby. Mr. Matthews.
Good morning. Wow, has it been busy. We're just getting back from our MABE conference in Ocean City. It was a nice time, but driving back, it was a nice drive, but we always need to reflect a little bit, and Mom always said to count our blessings. While I was at the conference, I got an opportunity to discuss life with other Board members, and, you know, just right across the bridge, over in Calver County, they're, they're shrinking. They're talking about laying off teachers, they're talking about all this miserable stuff. So I just figured it would be good to take time and revel that we live in St. Mary's County. We broke ground on a brand-new school yesterday. How exciting. I'm just, I'm on top of everything. Everything's a wonderful day.
Very good.
It was, we need to just take a minute and count our blessings, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Mrs. Washington.
Thank you, Dr. Raspa. I was also in attendance at the Captain Francis Walter Duke Elementary School groundbreaking. That was a tremendous day. But my Board members have spoken of it so eloquently, I don't know if it's anything else to add to it, but it was wonderful, and it was a great day. Where other school systems are not building schools or closing schools, we are building schools, and our schools are beautiful. And I want to thank Brad Clements and his staff did a tremendous job of making everybody comfortable, even though it was cold, there was a tent, and there were boards laid down so we wouldn't get our feet wet. We had snacks, a lot of the elected officials were there. It was a beautiful day. But since every, I couldn't say it any better than you two, so I'm going to talk about something else. But I want to be recorded as saying that I was there at the groundbreaking ceremony. As we attended the MABE conference, which is held once a year, and the opening session was on lessons from Gettysburgs and what leaders can learn. And the significance of the Battle of Gettysburg was 165 soldiers met and engaged for something they believed in and risked their lives for it. Fifty-one thousand of those soldiers died, and there are lessons that we can learn about leadership from the Battle of Gettysburg. Some things we learn about leadership is, it is defined and refined. It is studied and learned. Leadership is destroyed and restored. Leadership is weakened and improved. And leadership is time and situation sensitive. And leadership is not a solitary pursuit. It is believed that some people are born into leadership, but most must be cultivated because there are not enough quality leaders. Here are some lessons that leaders can learn from the Battle of Gettysburg, and I'll give you about 11. One, know the end game. We must know, understand, and articulate, and hold steadfast to the end goal. Two, strong leaders attract capable, strong leaders, and they have the power of influence. This is called human magnetism. For example, good principals attract strong teachers. Three, prudent leaders know there are always exceptions to lesson two. There are people who are capable, but not as capable as they need to be. Four, know how to make the most of their resources and assets at hand. We do that well here. We do more with less, all the time. Five, demonstrate a force of character and be guided by a strong moral compass. Six, determine and prioritize actions based on data, probability, and organization risk-reward calculations. Seven, have a grasp of the big picture and appreciation for any commitment to our role in it. Eight, we can offer and accept truth to power and never fear it. Nine, title and rank may offer opportunity, but it takes effort and performance to produce desired results. Ten, know what comes next and be prepared to act accordingly, realize and react. This is called the checkerboard mentality. Eleven, understand and appreciate the use of the power of words. Good leaders know that some things do not need to be said. Overall, the MABE conference was exceptional, and it was great to reconnect and network with former, new, and experienced Board of Education members, Superintendent, Board Attorneys, exhibitors, MSD representatives, and most importantly, we met with our State Superintendent, Dr. Lilian Lowery. It was a wonderful event, and we Board members learned a lot, and we will be applying our knowledge to our job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Mrs. Allen.
Like the rest of the Board, I was also at the groundbreaking, and it goes without saying that it was done beautifully. I think Mr. Clements and all the staff here at St. Mary's County Public Schools, they really spoil us, because you talk with Board members across the state, as we did at the Fall Conference, and you discover that the high bar that we have set is not always met in other places, nor is it necessarily aspired to. So congratulations to everyone. Mrs. Washington talked about the Fall Conference, and, but she didn't share that she was an integral part of the President's Dinner Thursday evening. She chaired one of the award committees that selected a Board member in the state for all that they had contributed to the service on the Board. And so she, she read the criteria for the, for the award and explained that and did a very nice job with that. I had the opportunity to present two sessions at the, at the conference. One was on, an update on the Maryland Virtual Learning Advisory Council, and then the Superintendent, Mr. Clements, and I did a presentation on tomorrow's leaders. I thought, I've been talking about it with Board members across the state, many of whom, most of whom don't do anything like this. And for them, often, professional development begins and ends with certificated staff. And we understand as a system that professional development is for everyone, and helping them to be better leaders is an important piece of that. So I'd like to thank Mr. Clements and the Superintendent for participating in that and helping to share that vision. It was, it was really good. And lastly, I will say that I attended a session on using iPads in classroom instruction, and I found it really very, very interesting. So thanks to everyone, because we were one of very few Boards that had 100% participation by Board members. And, but we understand that in service on this Board, you don't just walk in and automatically know what to do and how to do it, and it's as important for us to have professional development as it is for all of our staff. So I'd like to thank my colleagues for making the commitment of time and energy to go and attend that conference every year as we do. It's very important, and I appreciate that you all make that commitment.
Thank you, Mrs. Allen. I noticed that there were many new people there. Many new Board members, I guess, appointed and elected around the state, and it was interesting to meet with all these people, or at least most of them. You get a different perspective, like everyone is saying, of what's happening in different counties. And they come to us, what are you guys doing down there? How do you do all these great things? And, you know, we live in St. Mary's County. We do great things. And of course, we're very, very fortunate. Obviously, the county has, you know, maintained, you know, financial credibility, so that helps us a great deal, and we should all be thankful for that. And as far as I'm concerned, we got the best teachers and the best staff in the state of Maryland, and of course, the best Superintendent in existence. Wow. Existence.
That goes beyond the universe.
Now, that doesn't mean you have additional.
She just goes to be levitate there. I just felt a bit of empowerment.
That doesn't mean you have an additional time today. Little humor.
Thank you.
Well, we have fun when needed, and you have to have some humor. But in any event, I thought the conference was one of the more exceptional ones. I really enjoyed it. Everyone who attended, even Peter enjoyed it, his first conference at MABE.
Peter wasn't here with us.
No, he didn't make it. That's right. You were, I'm getting confused. You were at the.
Groundbreaking.
Yeah.
Yes.
But you'll get there. But it was very invigorating. I did. And I did not have a moment of downtime. I really enjoyed talking with everybody and listening to ideas, and it's really stimulating to be around good people, people who think, you know, educators who want the maximum for children in all systems, and that's great, and that's just what we do. And of course, yesterday was a great day in St. Mary's County. The Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School groundbreaking ceremony. Most everybody in this room was there, and great, very emotional. Sandra is part of the Duke family, and she was there with most of her family, it was about 40 people from the family, approximately.
That was not every.
No, and that was.
A representative sample.
They're a voting block, so you want to.
Yes, Mrs. Crosby, a true hero. Captain Walter Francis Duke was credited for downing 19 enemy aircraft and received many citations and medals. And he was a very young man. Unfortunately, he, you know, he had to die so young, but he gave his life for something he really believed in, and something that we cherish. And we all know what that is. It's our freedom. And we all know what that means, because in recent times, we listen to what's on the news, and we listen to stuff in the newspaper, and there are people around the world who would like to snatch that freedom away from us. But that will never happen, because we live in the United States, this is America, and it's land of the free. And that's the way, I'm sure, we Americans will keep it that way, not just for now, but in the future, to come, many years to come. So in any event, I don't want to get on any soap opera, but it was very, very emotional and stimulating, and I'm really honored to have had the opportunity to represent this Board of Education yesterday as part of the school system and the community. It was very, very close to me. In fact, the Duke family has accepted me as a surrogate individual in the family. I used to live next door to Sandra's mother, Mrs. Ferns, and she used to make comments about my Chesapeake Bay retriever, that he was such a big dog. So we had some fun over time, and of course, Sandra and her sister used to babysit for Mara and I. We had three children when we were living across the street at that particular time. In any event, it was a good time, everybody's happy about it, and everyone is invited to attend, visit the school when it is completed. It's open invitation. Dr. Marterano doesn't mind me saying these things. Sometimes he gets nervous when I invite the world or something. So we're all looking forward. Brad tells us that we already started digging, the machine was out there yesterday on the back line, and they were actually digging, and so that's a good sign. So thank you very, very much.
Yes.
Dr. Marterano, it's Superintendent.
My turn. Okay, I'm just listening attentively to all of you. I mean, you've really covered things well this morning. So good morning, Board members. Great to see you. Good morning, members of our community who are here as well. Today is our National School Bus Safety Week recognition, and that's occurring the week of October 25th through the, 21st through the 25th, and we're going to do some recognition momentarily about that. As some of our, I see some of our bus drivers are coming in here today, which is great. Good morning. So let me move through this and give it the honor that it needs today, because I've got a lot of important things to communicate to the Board. First of all, I want to congratulate the Chesapeake Public Charter School for their green practices within their school. They were recently featured in the September edition of the Rally Reader, the monthly online newsletter for a recycle rally program for K through 12. I shared with you some other information. They were recently recognized. This is another article. The article stated that "We travel to the, we travel to the old line state of Maryland where we catch up with a school with a history of firsts." Chesapeake Public Charter School is not only one of the first schools to enroll in the recycle rally, it is also the first charter school based in local St. Mary's County. So we're very proud of the work that occurs there and this recognition as well. Congratulations to Trish Tillotson from Chopticon High School. She is a teacher, PE teacher there, who was selected as a 2013, 2014 High School Physical Education Teacher of the Year, and this is a mouthful, by the Maryland Association of Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance, better known as MAPHRT. She will be presented with the award on Friday, October the 18th, at the MAPHRT Awards Banquet in Hunt Valley, Maryland. That's a big deal. That's a real big deal. I hope we're going to get some additional focus on that from our local reporters who are here today. We continue to excel. Our teachers are phenomenal, and the recognitions just sort of take care of themselves by virtue of everybody working hard every day, and I'm very pleased with that. And Peter, I'm sure you know her. Do you know her?
Yes, I had her for about two years. She's a great, great teacher. She deserves, she deserves all the awards she gets.
Wonderful to get that personal endorsement from you. I love how we engage in the media. So that's great. I was holding my breath. I hope she was a fantastic teacher. Because I looked at you like, please say that right there. Board members, as you know, we continue to seek every grant opportunity that's out there. Lots of grants within our school system. I've shared with you some of those, but recently I sent you a communication regarding that we just received a teacher and principal evaluation grant in the amount of $98,000 from the Maryland State Department of Education. And what I want to highlight for the community is that we are constantly cobbling together additional funds as a result of grant sources that are out there to provide enhancements to our operating budget. The amount of grant funding we have in motion at any given time is phenomenal. We really work hard with that, and we don't have a grant writer. We do this in addition to all the other work. See, I feel we're at a great disadvantage at times with school systems that have a whole area devoted to this topic. They're constantly scrolling and scanning grant opportunities, and they have formalized grant writers in their system. We're doing that in addition to the work that individuals already have on their plate, and extremely competitive, where we are able to win awards and grants over top of individuals that have full-time grant writers. I reflect back on the very competitive grant, the $2.5 million DODEA grant that we received, and being in a position where I heard some other superintendents talking to their Board members, and I overheard, or staff members, saying, how comes we didn't apply for that? Why did they get it and we didn't? And I kind of had a nice little opportunity to smile a little bit on that one. But the $98,000 will be used for, and I want to be very explicit in this, $15,000 to expand our data warehouse capabilities, to connect our current system to the SLO process, the Student Learning Outcome Process. $5,000 to expand our professional development to support this initiative with attention to the preparation and the support of the evaluators. We recognize, I see our representatives from our association, how much time this takes and to do it well. Our teachers are expecting it to be done well. We have to train them and support them in that initiative. And $78,000 will be devoted to providing portable technologies, such as tablets and laptops to support principals and supervisors' accessibility and reporting of teacher performance by conducting classroom observations using the T-PASS framework that we have in place. And this is a real big jump for us to move that out, to ensure that everybody has the technologies able to do it that makes that a smoother, more efficient process, I should say. I almost said easier. It is not an easy process to make it more efficient and smoother for them to be able to do what they need to do and provide those tools. So we're very pleased to receive that. I also, too, want to join in and say how pleased we were about the groundbreaking yesterday. You've said it all well. I will just talk about my little anecdotal story. The little child, I'm hesitating in my words, and you all caught some wonderful pictures on the Enterprise, as well as BayNet. I appreciate the great coverage yesterday, but a lot of those, I'm a very expressive person, very demonstrative in my words and expressive, and, you know, when you're born Italian and Irish, and my hands moving, I'm constantly talking and making facial expressions, and oftentimes that shows up in these pictures. This young child, little child, four, five years old, four, I believe, was the strongest child I've ever encountered in my entire career, as she was helping me break the ground with the shovel, and she was manipulating the end of the shovel, and she was digging the whole, I think she was digging the whole foundation, Brad. I mean, I had to hold the shovel. There it is. So she took off running, I'm chasing her, I got her by the hand, I got a gold shovel in my hand, and the picture in the Enterprise, it has, I have this god-awful look on my face, because I'm trying to hold the shovel, because if you look at it carefully, it's about ready to go into the side of another child, and I didn't want to have an issue of a liability at the groundbreaking. So a lot of behind-the-scenes things go on. I appreciate that you didn't notice all of that, but there's always other things going on at these wonderful events that we've spoiled you all on. So there's always other action, but I was delighted, and I tweeted out last night, I said something to the effect of this wonderful picture, and it's entitled, "A Child Runs Away With Superintendent and Gold Shovel." Sounds like the title of a child's book. I mean, we could write a whole story about that. She was delightful, and the funny part was, her mother was there, and I said, whose child is this? And her mother, with great delight, was laughing and just wanted to continue all the merriment. But it was a beautiful day. I'm absolutely so proud, as stated yesterday, and let me say it again, to be a part of this event where, as I stated, this was just meant to be. It was right to do, the right thing to do, and when you understand the background of Captain Walter Francis Duke, understand his character, I think what I've stated again yesterday is that his character is emblematic of what we want all students to aspire to, and that will carry us through in terms of the development of the curriculum and the theme and the process for this school that will provide educational opportunities for generations to come. And it was, quite frankly, a very moving and emotional experience for many of us who were in attendance, because these are big deals in communities. As we have spent time with other Board members, I reacted, Dr. Raspa, at a different level in terms of the MABE conference. I've obviously been around a number of years and have noticed great turnover in superintendency positions, Board positions, and disappointed the number of people who are deciding to hang it up because of the intensity of the work and the challenges in local communities and the frustrations about resources, et cetera. I noticed there was a lot of people there, but interesting enough, a lot of new faces that are turning over quickly, and the stability of this Board is much appreciated. So when you have a community such as ours, where the, we're spending the taxpayer dollars in a very judicious and focused way, to build a new school, that school will cost us $27 million. In play, we will have another $23 to $25 million project with Spring Ridge renovation to put all those monies. To put all those monies, $50 million in play, that's a big deal for our community. We don't usually get that kind of motion at the state level, and with the forward funding, the advanced funding at the local level, the $10 million to advance the renovation of Spring Ridge, really puts us in some really intense air right now of what's occurring for our children and our community. And so, a great responsibility to whom much is given, much is expected, great responsibility with making certain those dollars are judicially spent and designed in the proper way. We put Mr. Schible, the Schible Construction on notice yesterday, guaranteed that they would be on time, early, and under budget. And so, that's the word of which we want to convey, and knowing them, I'm sure that it will. But the overall day was beautiful, and it just, I'm glad we were able to have it outside because it just wouldn't have had the same feel if we did it at the Dr. Force Career and Technology Center as well. So, a good day, you all have already talked about that, and we want to continue to advance that, but I will state what Mrs. Crosby emphasized, I am going to be insistent, and I will be, as only a good teacher can do, correcting people in the proper way, that I do not want this name shortened, I want that to be forever known as the Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School. It's a mouthful, I know, but for us to shorten that does a real disservice to the name of the individual, and it takes away from what we're really talking about. We have a nice way of shortening names, we do that just in society, you know, we come up with our own acronym or something, and so when we spend the time to honor somebody, I will refer to it as the Dr. James A. Force Career and Technology Center, the Letty Marshall Dent Elementary School, George Washington Carver Elementary School, and the list goes on with that. I want the same thing to occur for the Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School. So, Board members, help me in setting that norm with the community. People will rise to that level, but it ultimately has to do with the level of respect and the consideration, and I come from a level of sensitivity with that, with a name like Materano, I get so many versions of it, and people shorten it, I just sort of react. But I also worked in Prince George's County for a number of years, and a very sensitive topic for them is the fact that people shorten it to PG, it is Prince George's County. We don't shorten Anarundel to AA, we should say the full name of which we give it. And so, I know that I'm being very directive today in my comments about that, but I really firmly believe that, and I appreciate the fact that Jason from the Enterprise is covering that today, and he emphasized that heavily in the newspaper today too, I just want that to be there. And the good news is too, is that, highlighted in both the articles that were written thus far in the BayNet as well as the Enterprise, is that one of my concerns is that, you know, Evergreen is this beautiful school that's tucked way back in the inner sanctum of Wildwood, and it's quite a while, a ride back there. You have to have a reason to go back there. Once you get back there, it's this beautiful enclave of a building and site location, et cetera. But I'm convinced the majority of our citizens who put the taxpayer dollars up for that have not seen it. You have to have a reason to go back there. The beautiful thing about the Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School is it will be on display at the top of the hill, off of Hollywood Road, anybody coming into the county seat to do business at the county center will have to be just drawn to look either left or right as they're driving up the road to see what's occurring there. This beautiful building that we have as Evergreen is going to be the prototype for the building that we'll see on display for the Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School, and it's absolutely gorgeous, it's award-winning, it's won architectural awards, and to have it tucked away does not do the justice, I think, that our citizens deserve. So, I highly encourage the citizens of this community to drive back and see Evergreen, I'd be very impressed with it, that'll be the exact replica with the advanced technologies added to this. So, a great day, so let me continue to move forward. I want to commend Anna Loughlin, President of our Teachers Association. She has taken on a personal challenge of Go For The Goal, a fundraiser that she sponsors regarding grazing money for childhood cancer, correct? And she's worked with me and our school system staff, that if you put in a dollar to wear certain items that particular day, then the money's generated, would go to a good cause. Anna's upped her ante this year, and she raised $3,000 for this cause, and so we're very pleased about doing that, and being also very sensitive to the fact that we're always asking individuals to give, that she did that in a very sensitive way with the support of us as well, and so, thank you, Anna, give her a round of applause for that work. Sent me several pictures last night, and I'll try to get those out. Yeah, we communicate constantly, I think I read those at 3:30 this morning, so that continues. I do want to make some editorial comments, if you would allow me to do so. I have a great concern right now for the state of our nation in terms of the federal government shutdown. We live in a real hotspot of that consideration. Many of our families, many of our teachers, their spouses, our, many of our employees are impacted by this federal government shutdown. I just ask that we are extremely sensitive to that with all of our teachers, all of our staff, all of our families who may need those considerations as they're dealing with the financial challenges of the federal government shutdown. It is my hope and prayer that the elected officials can quickly resolve this matter and do what is necessary, because it is now having a trickle-down effect to community. I'm hearing from people more with the emotional stress, as you look at the cable news stations or any news stations, they're having countdown of how many days it's been in existence, and quite frankly, when I hear things that people are not willing to talk to each other, that causes me great concern as a citizen and as a person, and particularly as superintendent, because my style is the door never closes, no matter how much challenges may exist between parties, that, and Liz and I have talked about this all the time, the door remains open. We talk, and great minds come together to collaborate, to be cooperative and communicate by based upon that, and it is my hope that that occurs, and we resolve this soon. Because the other piece out there is, you may have been following, the impact on Head Start. Thus far, we have, in the light of all this, we've received the recipient of a, over $11 million grant for the total amount over the years. Thus far, there's no impact for the funding at this moment, but each day, each week that goes by causes consideration. I will be interviewed today by Education Week, they're wanting to know the impact of the sequestration on short-term and long-term impact, and if you remember, for us, that was a consideration of about an 8.2% cutback on our title programs, our special ed programs to the tune of about $500,000, if my memory's correct, we're getting some updated information. But all of these things linger out there, something will have to come home to roost eventually if it's not resolved. So, eventually, you know, when people say, "Well, it's only $500,000," that's a lot of money, that's a lot of money. You know, people have actually said to me, "Well, in consideration of all the monies that you have in your budget, that's only $500,000," but every dollar is accounted for, for staffing, for healthcare, for everything that we deal with, a shift of $500,000 is a major shift for us. And so, you think the larger the school system, the greater the impact, and depending upon how certain things have been funded, certain Head Start programs across the nation have already been challenged by this. There was a rally last week, you know, bringing people forward from various parts of the nation with it, and everything is constantly in stress. I'll be doing some further conversation about, at the recommendation of Liz and NEA working with some groups up in DC to talk about the challenges associated with pension systems and how we have to fund that as well. Promises made, promises kept is my philosophy, and how we balance all of that out at a time when we want a quality educational process for all of our children. And again, I read some information early in the morning that emphasizes our philosophy. I'm a firm believer that, you know, our budget is large, there's no question. We acknowledge that, you know, $189 million is a large amount of money to run a school system, that is a large school system. But the majority of those dollars, as you noted, you've all been schooled in my acumen regarding the fact that 85% of that budget goes to personnel, and recognizing that, take away the technologies and all the pieces, the most essential focal point for having a quality educational system is having the very best teachers. So, when I talk to you about highly qualified, highly effective teachers, if we don't have the highly qualified, highly effective teachers in front of our children, all of the things that we provide those teachers go by the wayside because they're not maximized and leveraged to the full usage in that sense. And take away those items, masterful teachers can teach all children, any child, based upon the fact of their style and their delivery and their knowledge. So, I'm a great supporter, as you all know, and a great advocate in the terms of a very child-centered approach, a very teacher-centered approach in protecting that interaction with the child and the teacher, and there's, every example that we have in the school system is predicated on that belief, and making the adjustments to have the best teacher with each child. So, all of these political conversations really have a great bearing in what we do every day. And I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about this today, because this is why you exist as a Board, you represent our citizens, but you also have to make sense of all the policy shifts and the law changes and the events that occur economically. And we have been, as anointed as stewards in this community, as overseers of this organization, how we protect the individuals who in my ways are voiceless, our students, they can't vote, so we have to provide those voices for them, as well as the advocacy with our teachers and with our parents, and providing the very best teachers is a major prong in the advancement of all of the goals that sit in front of you, because quite frankly, I always say, all these wonderful vision plans that we have, none of that can occur without the solid workers that we have in our school system on the supporting side of our shop, but without our teachers who carry the heavy water every day. So, pension systems, healthcare, salaries, all of these things become very intertwined as it pertains to budget cuts and shutdowns and things such as that. So, let me continue, I'm almost there, thank you for listening, and I'm almost there, and I want to end, as I always do, on something extremely positive, so bear with me, I may need a glass of water to move through all of this. I want to give everybody the do, that is, great leaders focus on process, product, and vision and recognition every day. Great leaders do that, you do that all day long. So, part of our recognition today is to read All The Work Hard Be Nice recipients, that we said, "We had a little bit of lull there in the summer, I think I only read 20 names." Well, get comfortable, as I'm about ready to read all of these names, and I try to do this in a very quick way without giving any kind of chopping of anybody's name. Wachula Adams, Jennifer Arkley, Mary Armstrong, Mildred Bailey, Diane Ball, Wendy Binkley, Audra Bishop, Lisa Brubacher, Christopher Brukhart, Building Service Staff at Greenview Knowles Elementary School, Frenetta Carson, Frederick Carter III, Curtis Charles, Bethany Chikon, Jennifer Consalvo, Sherri Costonas, Judy Courtney, Ellen Crawford, Michelle Curtis, Jeff Durenzo, Amy Downs, Wanda Duran, Kelly Egan, Audrey Ellis, Pam Varner, Samantha Farrell, Christina Fuentez, Betsy Gay, Nesrin Gibb, Martina Green, Bridget Greenwell, Tracy Grawas, Kristen Orgi, Head Start at Benjamin Bannaker Elementary, Annix Green Holly, and Mechanicsville Elementary, Robert Higgs, Bert Hinman, Jesse Hood, I turn the page, Mike Jones, Patrick Cottrell, Amy Cudleboy, Kathy Lacer, Claudette Lindo E. Banks, Joe Longerbarty, Lady Lynch, Michelle Malone, Robert Morgan, Teresa Morgan, Darlene Morris, Alita Miles, Mandy O'Neill, Jennifer Overstreet, Teresa Penifather, Donald Fipow, Jennifer, Jason Pridgen, Cortina Quick McQueen, Cortina Quick McQueen, April Reese, Will Ridley, Zachary Salapek, Deb Sambalene, Kara Sapp, Ginny Simpson, the PBIS team, Carrie Spurling, David Taylor, Jeff Thompson, you better be working hard and being nice every day, Gail Tiffany, Mark Uncle, Ashley Varner, and staff, Elaine Wagaman, Donna Waldron, Steve Whitten and crew, as opposed to staff up above, we'll get that clarification later, Kathy Woodford, Charlotte Woodley, Lori Wyman, Jacqueline Yorkshire, Kathleen Zimmerman, and Lee Roy Zimmerman. Just give them a round of applause because they were working hard and being nice. So, Dr. Rasba, thank you for allowing me to be a little longer today than normal, but a lot of things occurring, we're very busy, and I'm back, it's back to you, sir, thank you.
Fine, thank you very, very much, Dr. Materano. Moving along into recognitions, National School Bus Safety Week, Mr. Thompson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
School bus drivers and school bus attendants perform a vital service for our school system and every school system every day. Almost every program in our school system relies on them in order to have an effective program. Being a school bus driver or school bus attendant is not an easy job, it comes with numerous challenges. Many think it is just like sitting behind a wheel of a car when it is far from that. So, there's a little analogy we like to use sometimes in department transportation when kind of explaining and getting people in the thought process of being a bus driver, so I'd like to share that with you today. So, imagine you're sitting in a classroom, or you're in front of a classroom of 25 students, and you have a 30 to 45-minute period, and you have, your challenge is to make sure these students have good behavior during this time period. Of course, teachers know how much of a challenge this is, but anyone who has a kid's playdate, who has a birthday party, I have two kids driving down the road doing one of these things, you know, knows how much of a challenge this is. Now imagine, instead of being in front of this class of 25 students facing them, your back's to them, and then you have to sit in a seat, so you're down low, and your challenge is still to maintain the behavior of these students on your bus. That's a big challenge. Now, all these students, they're not the same age, you have a four-year-old and a 10-year-old, you have a 13-year-old and an 18-year-old. The students from different various backgrounds and backgrounds in history, definitely a big challenge, because a four-year-old and a 10-year-old are not, do not take things the same way, do not have the same understanding and cooperation, so to manage those behaviors, you really have to have a very diversified problem-solving solutions. So, definitely a big challenge for our school bus drivers. So, that's 25 students with your back turned, sitting down, various, various age ranges, various skill levels. Now, let's double that to 50 students, and that's typically what a bus driver faces each day, and we haven't even moved the bus yet. Next, we have to go out and drive the bus and deal with weather skills, weather issues, traffic items, bus stop locations, parents at the bus stop, which I think we face parents more every day, every bus stop seems to have a parent at it, and every driver seems to have an interaction with those parents. Mechanical issues with the bus, navigating narrow roads, tight turnarounds, and all sorts of other items. So, as you can imagine, and as I've explained, I think, a school bus driver is definitely a very challenging job, and we have over 300 of dedicated school bus drivers that do that job fantastically every day, and we're very fortunate to have them in St. Mary's County. So, with that, I'd like to ask three of our bus drivers that are joining us today, Ms. Debbie Arnold, Marnie Markley, and Barbara Stablitt to come up, and I'd also ask the superintendent to join us, and ladies, if you'd mind standing up front here. So, these are three of our fine, dedicated school bus drivers that are here to accept recognition on behalf of all the school bus drivers in our system. So, National School Bus Safety Week has been designated for the week of October 21st to October 25th, and Wednesday, October 23rd is designated as the School Bus Driver and Attendant Appreciation Day in St. Mary's County. And today, we have a resolution that I would like the superintendent to present, and if you have any words.
I will.
For you, sir.
Goodness, thank you. I'm so sorry, this is so hard for me, I have to have these everywhere I go. I apologize for that. Good morning, everybody, come a little closer, get your do on the red carpet, it's great to see you as you represent all of our bus drivers, and let me just read this to you. Whereas the week of October 21st through 25th, 2013, has been designated as National School Bus Safety Week in the school systems across our great nation, and whereas school bus safety is an integral part of our educational program, and whereas the efforts of our school bus drivers in attendance in transporting our students safely to and from school each day are recognized for the importance, I'm going to come back and talk a little bit about that, the to and from is extremely important. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes Wednesday, October 23rd, 2013, as School Bus Driver Attendant Appreciation Day in St. Mary's County Public Schools, and that all school staff and students are encouraged to recognize this event and participate in its observance, signed this day by all the Board of Education members in front to your left, as well as myself as well. So, let me present that to you, if you would, and to represent all of our bus drivers in attendance, and I also want to say a couple words about our transportation process. First of all, to my right is a graduate of Leonardtown High School, Mr. Jeff Thompson, who is a county student, graduate of our school system, who makes us proud every day. He has really added a high-level professionalism to the whole Department of Transportation, extremely focused in terms of what needs to be done for efficiency, but always driving with a level of safety as the consideration. I'm very pleased with the staff that we have in transportation, how they respond to parent concerns, it's very busy, as we all know, at the beginning of the school year, getting everything down to the level of precision. As we now are As we now are close to 18,000 students that we are responsible for transporting. So as we talk about our enrollment numbers, I always use the 18,000 because that's how many students we are responsible for. We use different numbers based upon budget and FTEs and all that complicated information. But the bottom line is, we transport 18,000 in the morning, 18,000 in the evening. Do your quick math on that. That's 36,000, not to mention field trips, double runs, pre-K, Head Start, individualized issues, our special education stops, all of our individualized attendance issues with our attendants, making certain that all of our children across the continuum are safe. And how pleased we are with the work of our bus drivers and attendants every day. I just get a real sense of joy every time I ride by. We wave to each other. We're connected as a community. And the other piece that I want to emphasize to you, board members, is, and I know you've heard me talk about this. And as you go and you're talking to other board members, I always enjoy when you say that because it provides perspective. And those who have only lived and worked in St. Mary's County, congratulations, and that's wonderful. Those of us who've worked and lived in other environments that aren't quite as wonderful, recognize the challenges that exist in other places. And we're very fortunate and blessed to be able to have the quality of employees at which we do. So for example, where am I going with this conversation is this very clearly, that bus driver positions, some of our cafeteria employees, our parent educators, our attendants, there's been a great number of turnover in those positions in other counties. In St. Mary's County, we have stability. We have individuals who work in the job, who value the job, who conduct themselves at the highest level of ethical and professional standards, who keep our children focused, and come back year after year. Goodness gracious, when we have attempted to change some bus routes and change some bus drivers, my goodness, how popular you all are. I mean, because it goes back in some cases, generations. You can't change my child's bus driver because they drove me to school. That level of relationship. And I get a real gleam in my eye when that's told to me because it talks about relationships. You know your children, you know our children, and you care about them. When we know our children and know them well, we wrap our arms around them and that's all we think about is the safety and the well-being of them. Every individual who works in the school system, take away our titles, my board members have heard this, we're all leaders of children and you're leaders of children as well. And you have the awesome responsibility of providing that safety every day to our children. And I know that you're representing, you're three of the individuals representing over 200 bus drivers that we have? 300, excuse me. And all of our contractors. And I delight in the fact of how I'm able to talk to everybody when we're gathered at the auditorium down at Great Mills every year. And I go through the exercise, how many years people have been employed. But what I also recognize is that level of camaraderie and connection that we all make with each other. And we're all doing it on behalf of kids. And I recognize, I've got, when people ask me how many children I have, I say, I have 18,000. That's a lot of kids. And I recognize that not everybody is cooperative every day and not every parent is cooperative. And we all work together in the best interest. So on behalf of this wonderful Board of Education, on behalf of our community, on behalf of our school system, I want to commend you. I want to congratulate you. And I want everybody to understand that when we think about the most important thing that we do, we've got to take care of the safety of our children and staff every day before that educational process can occur. It's got to be a safe nurturing environment and you do that every day. And for that, we thank you. So board members, join me, if you would, in a thunderous round of applause for these individuals. Now I say that because I know that the rain clouds are on the horizon. Are they here yet? And that creates some challenges for you and I ask you to be extra cautious today. We haven't had a lot of rain lately and probably that oil residue is out there. And we want to make certain that we're safe today and always abiding by the safety issues. I know that I don't want to put you on the spot. Would any of you like to say anything? No? Okay, good.
I take on behalf of all the bus drivers in the county.
Come on, come on, come on, come on. Good, thank you. Thanks for speaking up.
On behalf of all the bus drivers in St. Mary's County, we do thank you for this recognition.
Thank you. Thank you for saying that. I really appreciate that. So Jeff, thank you. Commend everybody. Get the word back out. And on this particular day, we would hope that everybody will recognize it. Very nice job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. We'd like to get a picture if we could. Give another round of applause. If you want to get a picture, if we could, Dr. Raspa, it's up to you.
Yeah, no, we'll take a picture and this time we'll take a five-minute break. Reconvene at this time. Madam Secretary, there's no public hearing today. No public comment, is that correct? Okay, moving along, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? The ayes have it. First action item, Department of Information Technology. Mr. Corns. How are you today, Mr. Corns?
No complaints at all.
Excellent. And if you have any, keep them to yourself.
We like that.
Give an answer to the board.
No problem.
And Dr. Raspa, members of the board, I actually have an interesting piece of technology that we'll try this morning where we are able to mirror iPads onto our screen now so I can run my presentation from this device.
Saw that at the conference.
Very good modeling today.
For our schools with STEM, this will cost us about $4 per teacher laptop. So it's a very reasonable price. The Maryland Department of Information Technology, or as they refer to themselves as DO-IT, has finished laying all the fiber in the county. We have been testing the fiber for about the last month.
And did it pass the test?
Yes, ma'am, it did. So we have put all our schools onto the fiber to verify that it will run. And what we have for you today is the memorandum of understanding from the state as well as what the reoccurring costs will be to present. So I'm going to kind of give you the DO-IT breakdown that you've had access to where we are looking at a distance of about 70 miles of fiber that exists in St. Mary's to connect all schools in between Letty Marshall Dent and Ridge Elementary School and all points in between that were not covered by the cable franchise agreement. So we have both aerial and bar grade fiber. And that becomes interesting in the price points because the aerial fiber is less expensive to maintain than the ground fiber is. So what DO-IT is pitching to us is for maintenance support of this, we're going to have about $145,000 a year for the maintenance of the fiber, which will also include an additional 200 megabits of internet connection. Right now, we have 200 megabits of total connection and we are, that is probably one of the best perks of this whole process. We really need some more network conductivity, especially with state testing and the amount of people that we have on our network. With our guest network included, we see on average every day about 15,000 connected devices, which is a good problem to have. So at the bottom of this contract, you also find that the state of Maryland is planning on increasing as we go forward with them, the bandwidth that is accessible. And they're hoping that by 2018 to see one gigabit of network connection, which will be an amazing amount of access for us. This would be provided to us at no additional cost per year. Okay? Does anybody have any questions about what they're referring to as attachment A? Okay. I had Mr. Omealy go over this memorandum of understanding that the state sent over and it is very boilerplate language they have used with every school system that they have done this job with and he had no concerns with it. I had, initially, they had posted me as the person who would be the signator of this, but we've had that changed over to Dr. Marterano. Come on now. There we go. And finally, we have a prorated letter because they have sent us over information based on a July 1st to June 30th. And so we've had it prorated back to October 1st as a start date, which will bring our total price down to about $109,000 for the remaining of the year. I realize that the number sounds very large, but we have never paid for any network conductivity in St. Mary's prior to this. Only $1,000 a month for internet access from MetroCast, but everything else has been provided to us gratis through the cable franchise agreement. Unfortunately, those connection speeds are no longer going to be valid for our, what I'll refer to as cable modem schools. With Leonard Town Elementary School and Evergreen being the most stark examples where they have a, what I would call a residential amount of internet for the number of students that they have being in the neighborhood of 800. So it's just not something we'll be able to support further with all of the new initiatives going online. So I'm available for any questions you might have about this.
All right, questions, comments, Mr. Corns, Mrs. Allen?
It is something that with the Common Core curriculum coming on board and the new PARC assessments eventually going to an all-online service. We understood from Dr. Lowry's comments last week at the conference that the state is pressing for paper and pencil tests to be available for the first three years. They don't have confirmation on that yet, but they're continuing to press. But there will come a time where everything is online for the PARC assessments. And Mrs. Washington certainly for a number of years has been advocating for us to be able to move to textbooks and all of our resources to be offered electronically. And we are going there. I am quite convinced of that. So this is a need. I'm concerned about how we're going to pay for it. As Dr. Marterano said, we have significant budget at the same time. It is already allocated. And this is going to be a challenge to be able to find the funds to do this and yet it is something we are going to have to do. So thank you for doing your due diligence and...
And Mrs. Allen, if I may interject, I have an answer to 60% of your question. The state of Maryland has applied for a spin or a service provider index number for E-Rate. So we will be able to apply for E-Rate on this and receive about a 60% reimbursement of the total fee for next year. So this year, we're kind of in the pipe, but for next year, we will apply for E-Rate for this service and take that $145,000 and then pay for it and receive a reimbursement for it.
Great. Very good.
So I only have a 60% answer.
60% is better than zero.
I want the board to continue to ask what I define as very progressive questions in the sense of understanding the fact that for every new thing that occurs, I'm all about the advancement of the technology piece. But the concern that I have when PARC originally started their process was that it was going to be all technologically delivered, uploaded and downloaded. Keep in mind that that's a skill that young people need to learn, how to do. And anytime, if you look at our data and the research on this, anytime you move from a paper pencil administration to an online administration, there is a shift in terms of scores and performance. Students aren't comfortable with the fact of if they mess up, there's an opportunity for a greater level of error of where to find out where to go, how to manipulate the screens back and forth, issues in terms of servers crashing and not working properly. And we noticed that across the state when we issued the science MSA for fifth grade last year. Down across the board, they were lower scores. You have to take that into account. So why am I telling you that is how are we going to prepare our young people through the process of daily instruction for the level of comfort and use and ease of using the technological devices so that when they show up for the assessment, it's not a foreign experience for them? And so we got to do more in that level.
And actually, the student board member from Montgomery County was there for the conference. And he got up and spoke about the fact that he's quite concerned and said to Dr. Lowry that he was very concerned and was not in favor of this because he said that he relies heavily on being able to highlight certain information, underscore, make notes for himself in order to really bring his thoughts together and that this was not going to be available to him electronically. And she assured him that they were making provision for those kinds of things within the test. But I think the proof will be in bringing it forward and making sure our students are comfortable in, and they are not just comfortable, but they are very aware of what they can do and how it can be done.
But I also want you to be again futuristic in your thought process as well that one of the things that we try to control in statistics is what is defined as inter-rater reliability. That means that there's reliability from administer to administer of the event. So when we were doing MSA, we could say with a level of fidelity that all of our schools on Monday would be administering MSA math for grades three, four, and five in the elementary levels between this time. And they would all be administered with paper and pencil, using the same tool, the same instrument. And that creates a level of validity and reliability because it's the same administration occurring to everybody in that sample pool. When we start interjecting this next piece and just mark this day on your notebook to say, I don't want to kind of say I told you so, but when you start adding variables in terms of whether independent or dependent variables in terms of statistics that are going to create a variable as far as the results, such as implementing paper and pencil, you control the variables. Implementing with a device, if that device is not standardized, and so your school, you're using an iPad, your school, you're using laptops that are wheeled in, your school, you're not quite sure, you're using a hybrid of those models. And then different levels of reliability of the bandwidth. So first of all, I highlight that area. The second piece that Jim is talking about is the fact that one, we have been fortunate because we used all of our race to the top money in terms of technology. We use that money very judiciously to provide the bandwidth necessary for the wireless connections and to have the leasing tool. I know that Calvert County was asking about that, the leasing process of which we are using to make certain that we are having the latest machines and technological advances for our young people, but recognize inter-rater reliability from county to county, there's a technology disparity. Not all counties made the decision to do this. And so as I spoke on Capitol Hill about this particular topic, the issue was that the rural counties may not have the same funding mechanisms or same availability. And even a larger county, when you think about that ability to push all that out at one time, you're not going to have the same devices, the same tools, the same implementation. And quite frankly, not all schools can handle, use, doing the online administration, if the bandwidth isn't at a certain level of strength, to be able to handle that. So you know that when we open Hack at the same time, or you've heard the conversations about the Affordable Healthcare Act, they said that you can't get into the system. Everybody's flooding the system. The more people we have going into that system allows for more opportunities for it to be unreliable. So I'm telling you, the voice of common sense that has been alive and well in any conversation I've been a part of where we're advancing all of these wonderful advances, how are we going to do it? What's the technology disparity? What's the funding? How is the equalization going to be there for all children? And how is that ultimately going to have an impact on reliability of test scores? So you see my great concern right now as I continue to be an individual who is presenting a case that talks about the reliability on these standardized tests right now has gotten somewhat out of control, you know, in many arenas. One, now we're going to be placing ourselves in a position where the data is going to be open for all kinds of areas of challenge just based upon the statistical analysis of issues of reliability and validity of data. I didn't want to give you that sort of Statistics 101 today, but it's extremely important to understand that when we're going to be having conversations about why our scores were either up or down, I want to be able to be able to present it in a way that the playing field is equal. Right now, the way that we did MSA with AYP and AMO, which is now behind us, at least you could say what was occurring in Calvert was occurring in Charles, was occurring in St. Mary's. Same kind of time, the same kind of textbook, it's the same kind of issues. But when you start entering these variables that are going to be distractors, it creates issues for the... issues for the advancement of reliable and valid data. I just wanted to give you that.
Thank you, Dr. Mariano. Mrs. Washington?
Thank you. Well, based on that conversation, we know in education, there are always changes and there are always challenges. And this is to the superintendent, where do we stand? Because I know you're the president of PZAM and your job is to be concerned about the overall state of Maryland, which is noble, which is great, and you're doing a fabulous job. Where do we stand in regard to the technical diversity, the professional development and the funding for this?
So where do we as St. Mary's County?
Stand. How do we...
In comparison to others, we have, and see, there's, it's a wonderful question, Mrs. Washington, so thank you for asking for one, but there's no, allow me to have a couple of minutes to answer the question because it's not a yes, no. So thank you.
No, it wasn't.
Okay, so three minutes I've been relegated to. So we've made a real conscious decision, this board has, when we got the 1.4 million dollars for Race to the Top, we made a really concerted decision, effort to place all of our monies on technologies. We then, major component of that was also on the training of our staff. We recognize that we've got representatives from our association, we're pushing a lot of things out to our teachers right now to help them in this arena, but we're pushing too hard, too. We've also made some decisions about leasing machines, leasing as opposed to purchasing because of the obsolete nature of how they are. So by virtue of forward thinking, providing the bandwidth, providing the wireless capabilities, providing the use of the dollars that were one-time monies to advance the additional hardware that's out there, and then to provide the leasing agreement has put us in a great position for the future. Now, let me just add a little parking lot. In comparison to other counties, that's not occurring. They haven't made the decision to spend their dollars in this targeted way, which we had. They had different needs, they had different focal points, they made some decisions to place them on personnel, non-recurring dollars. We made this decision, and I've been advocating for the fact of this technology disparity for years since this Race to the Top implementation, because if I've advanced out this far, we collectively have advanced out this far, that creates us challenges based upon what I told you about inter-rater reliability from county to county, if they don't have, and I'm hearing that. So we've positioned ourselves well, but what we can't do is count on the fact that it's going to be reliable every day. As much as we love Jim Corns and all of his people, things happen, lightning strikes, servers go down, bandwidth falls, I mean, all that kind of stuff happens because we're relying on the technology. But to answer your question in a very direct way, we're in a good position, but yet I'm still concerned because I've introduced a term in discussion, which is it's been a spiky implementation, and that's my way of describing that it's like this. Gone are the days when we are saying every school on August 1st is going to be delivered a laptop for every child. No, we've had to take the monies that we've had to advance smart boards, Promethean boards, laptop initiatives, iPads, tablets, laptops on a cart, I mean, E-, I mean, on and on and on and on, but that's not occurring in every school, every day. We're pushing out when we get the money, and so I've had to really step back because I'm about equity, you know, I'm about that. So we have had to use our Title I's funds judiciously to advance the technologies. So we're, we have a very robust technology plan that we can never, quite frankly, keep ahead of. But what we've done is positioned ourselves with the rental agreements and the leasing agreements that when those come due, that we can get the next generation in. My goodness, I heard today they're introducing a new iPad in October, a new iPhone. I mean, they're in the pipeline. So what I've got to do is make certain that our young people have the best tools in front of them so they can be competitive in the 21st century, but also be very commonsensical to say that when we're issuing a series of assessments with these devices, that we've got to have some equalization in that. So how do we do that? And I don't have all those answers for you because there's great concern nationwide with Park as well as the other ones, New Balance, it just slipped my mind, but there's great concern with it right now. For the fourth time, to answer your questions, we're in good position in comparison to others, but still we have work to do.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks for the question.
It seems like we have a great plan to move forward, and I think our students are excellent students with technology, and I think they're going to grasp it easily. I do, I feel that because based to the training that they have from our highly qualified, enabled teachers, and plus you see little kids using the technology toddlers, so I don't think they're going to have any problem. All we need to do is put it in front of them. Most of them can get it.
Yeah, and they can.
And we provide help for those who can't.
But you've got to also train our teachers.
Definitely.
And so that challenge and support model, I love, oh my God, I love our teachers, I adore them. But I also recognize that we've had some very spirited discussions recently about the fact that we've got over fifteen things in motion right now. We're pushing a new annual, a new leave reporting system, ASOP. We're reporting a whole new email system. We've got Moodle, we've got this, we've got all kinds of things going, and our folks are eating it up, but they're saying, whoa, we need to stop, be trained? And that's why when we had our Day of Innovation on our Professional Development Day, it was one of the most powerful days because we had teachers teaching teachers, stopping, not introducing new things, but also going back and correcting some of these things in terms of our implementation. So it's also go slow to go fast. Sometimes we, that means go fast to go faster, but we've had to take a pause to really focus on providing the professional development and support because not everybody is a Jim Corns. So I put myself, quite frankly, on the continuum of technology use, and I'll use myself as an example. I am an immigrant to technology. I was the last student in my school to use a slide rule. I was the last group to start using a typewriter in college. I feel like a relic. All those things started coming, calculators, I remember I got my first TI-30 and, you know, all those things that occurred. So I put myself as about a five or a six on the technology continuum, and that may be higher than what expected, but I push myself. A Jim Corns is more of a native, that's what he does. Our kids, Peter is a native to the technology arena, that's what they do. They're going to have longer thumbs one day. I mean, that's the evolutionary process, that's what they do. But folk who are in the profession, whether you're a native and an immigrant, not everybody's comfortable. So we've seen within our own teaching rankings, what's a problem for one teacher is not necessary for other because they could just go in and go doot, 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 and then it's all done. I love when I have my moment where I, you know, we think we're really smart people until you have a technology glitch and you go, I mean, my screen's locked up, I got a new implementation for Google, and I can't find my spell check. And I'll go, get Jim Corns right now because, and I'm saying that with effect, because it's, I've wasted now fifteen minutes to try to find out where spell check is or this new thing. He'll come in and go, well, Dr. Mariano, if you just pull down this drop menu, it's right there, and he'll walk out and go, never mind, you know, like two seconds later. But it's natural for him. And that's why we have our technology support. But for other teachers, that may be very easy, for others it isn't, and we have to remember the individual who is struggling at the lowest level of comfort in providing that support in a differentiated way. And so is that good, Anna? Did I, do I get some credits there today?
I was the technology poster child at LMS, so I feel it's...
Was, is, okay.
I'm not there anymore, not your technology poster child.
So we advance it to provide the support and the challenges, so if we don't have the training, it's like great programs, if they don't have great people behind them, they will fall apart. I can't have my people falling apart in this technological arena if we're pushing too hard. And so that's been the message of the last month, and we've gone back in and scaffold that to support it, recognize the differentiated need for that. So, Dr. Rasba, I appreciate the questions from your board members, but I also apologize for my verbores today, but it's important to talk about that.
He's still a lie from yesterday.
That's information that is needed, and you do very well at providing information at those specific times, and we thank you for that, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm done, thank you.
Mr. Mathieu?
Mr. Corns, thank you for bringing this forward. You know, it's the path that we have to go. I love the fact that every year we're getting it more megabytes per second, I guess, bandwidth, whatever words you want to use, and it's not, our cost isn't going to increase. When we get up to one gigabyte, what could possibly happen to the cost of that on year six?
Mr. Mathieu?
Because, you know, I'm sorry, because I know we've got, you know, we've got fiber, we're kind of running down with one track, I guess, I would say, of people. So what could possibly happen?
So the entire Do It Initiative, not only did they come into St. Mary's and connect all of our schools, but they also went to the Emergency Operations Center at the county government building and dropped a fiber line that runs directly back to Baltimore, which is a tier-one internet providing site. So they have access to the, what I would call, the backbone of the internet at that point. They ran that at ten gigabits so that there is, you know, we will get to one gig of connection, there is ten times that available if they ever wanted to ramp up the service. That one gig of internet connection will be moving as fast as most servers would be able to give us the information back. So that's kind of where we really want to be, in that nice sweet spot, and if we maintain it, one gigabyte, we're going to be doing pretty well for the foreseeable future.
Right. And thanks, where my worry was, was the fee. Because I know the MetroCast that I get at home, I give them a little extra money and they send me a little more bandwidth. On year five, when we get to six, I just don't want them to say, well, you know, here you go.
We're dealing with, we're dealing with the state of Maryland, so I'm hoping that there will be more funding available from that governmental agency to kind of supplement what's needing to be paid. I've had lengthy conversations with them about this fee to start with. It seemed large.
Right.
But going into it and finding out that every mile of fiber has to be registered with misutility and that they get thousands of tickets a month about, you know, I'm digging in this area, do you have fiber? And they have to, you know, full-time staff just to deal with, so it all makes sense as to this model. I wouldn't expect to see any radical fee changes. And this appendix that they provided to us, it goes right into our memorandum of understanding, so we would have to go back and revisit that if something like that could happen.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sure.
Mrs. Corns?
I brought this up a long time ago, but you know how long time ago this is, that might have been five minutes ago in this age, about fiber optic. And I don't remember who in the county government said, don't forget to mention that we're the ones that are putting in the fiber optic. Is that no longer true or, because it does sound like they are connected to all of this?
Both the county government and St. Mary's County Public Schools were recipient of the fiber optic from the state of Maryland.
Right.
The state of Maryland applied for an ERA grant in, to the tune of about a hundred and fifty million dollars that they put matching funds with, and they deployed the fiber optic.
The state of Maryland?
The state of Maryland did. Now, with the hat tip to St. Mary's County Government, there was existent conduit in the ground that they had control of, and they were able to facilitate the state putting their fiber in that conduit to save on construction costs and those kinds of things. So there was a great partnership between the three entities to really pull this off. And as I've said multiple times, our main network point is in the EOC building where the county government charges us no lease or no rent to have fully redundant battery backups, environmentally controlled with fire suppressions. It's a very nice environment they have, and our stuff sits right beside theirs. We actually have a line that connects them together, so when they go to Great Mills to do their community presentations, they can stream video back through our network to their network. So we have a really good relationship with the county government.
Good.
And I would be remiss in saying that only the state of Maryland did this in isolation. This is a really large collaborative effort with the tri-county council being involved to get St. Mary's pushed up on the list of when to get things done. There was just a lot of people had their finger in this.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I'd like to say, really, we're advancing, especially in our schools, in the high schools and the middle schools, elementary schools as well. We're beginning a lot more technology, whether it's going to be like the iPads or, like you said earlier this year, we got the laptops in the classrooms instead of the, like the older computer models with the monitors. And with that, we need the internet as support for that technology, or else the technology wouldn't be as effective and it'd kind of be obsolete. So with that, I do support, in fact, in my own classes, we have switched from doing things in, recording our notes completely in journals and things like that, to completely having the class on the computer through a network so the teacher can post things, daily assignments, logs on the computer, and we learn how to save files, how to make different things, and go a little bit deeper into computer, using them, without that being the actual course for the class. And like what Dr. Mariano said before, obviously, my generation, we've had a lot more exposure to technology and are geared up to it, whereas others may not be, and still people in my generation may not still have the opportunities at home where others do. For example, they might not have a laptop, they might not have an iPad to experience technology and get, and get ramped to it, really. And if you, we live in a world where in the next couple of years, jobs are going to be dependent on you being able to use technology at a professional level. So in school, having those resources to be able to learn, it's crucial, really.
Okay, so just capture what you just said and put it in a quote somewhere, because that's the basis for why the board is doing what they're doing. We don't want any of our young people in this county to feel inferior or to also be when they're competing in the 21st century or for college and career readiness, that they're not getting the same experience that other young people are getting. We want them to have a higher experience so that no matter where they go, because the world is flat, that they're competing at the highest possible level, and we're getting evidence of that all the time. I haven't told the board this yet, but in December, we're planning an event where I'm going to be inviting graduates back from 2013, 12, 11, and 10. Representative samples, connecting with individuals who are in college right now at various levels, so they'll be either a senior, junior, freshman, sophomore in college, and we're going to have a dialogue with them to say, how have you been prepared for college based upon all the things that we said we were delivering? And I'm going to do that qualitatively with, through conversation as opposed to data. So to check in, so what you just said is why this board is moving this agenda forward, is that level of competitiveness and success in that sense. But the other question I have for you is the fact, are you seeing the transformation as a student in this school district of the technological infusion in the classroom, the pushing those things out at a different level? Things such as using Google Notes and Moodle and all the things that we're talking about, smart boards, things that you had just mentioned. Could you elaborate on that? Because I need to know from you on that arena.
Definitely, and it's been progressively ever since elementary school. I even attend elementary school in the county, and we've been building up technology throughout the years since I've been in that level. And ever since, we've had things, for example, I've used Moodle before, using things, teachers using smart boards in the classroom, teaching students how to use programs on the computer that aren't even directly related to that specific curriculum. So you kind of add that additional aspect of learning, aspects of technology, when it's not really directly implied, if you're following what I'm trying to say.
Absolutely. So you're seeing the shift occurring, I mean, the shift has, should have occurred already, but you're seeing more evidence of that every day?
And other students do as well, all around the county, not just me, going to the middle and high elementary schools that I've been to. It's around the county that we've been using more technology, and it's been, it's being incorporated a lot more because, like I said before, it's crucial for, like, but one of the goals of the board and superintendent is to be college and career ready. And to be college and career ready, in, I'll say, in this day and age, you need that support from technology that's coming in, and like you said, that the newest technology is coming in. So we have the best tools to be ready for what's coming up for us in the future.
Okay, that's, it's a wonderful dipstick for me. So as you're giving your weekly or monthly reports or your board report at the beginning of the meeting, I appreciate your focus on the bullying, but think about also ways that you can tell the board, inform the board of technological usages in your school, things that are happening in that arena, because that's the true test for all of this, is it practically being used. Our teachers were pushing it out, providing the support to them. But the way you captured that, I think I'm actually have Sandra go back and watch the video, the way that you made the connection to say, all the things that we're doing to prepare you for the future is right in my wheelhouse of where we live, about making the decisions of which we've done. So you've really articulated that extremely well today as a firsthand student who lives this. If we're missing our mark, I need to know. That's why I have this dialogue with our students who graduated in the last four years. If we're missing our mark, I need to know, because it's kind of like the emperor's new clothes. If we're out there saying we're doing all these things, but there's no evidence of that, we've missed our mark. So thank you.
No, yes, and thank you, Mr. Corns.
Thank you, Peter. All right, board members, this is an action item. We need a motion.
I move that the board... I move that the Board of Education approve the M O U for fiber usage from the Maryland State Department of Information Technology as presented.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Corrigan.
Thank you.
Next action item is Board of Education Budget Calendar, Mr. Norris.
Oh, wow.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
He's an immigrant.
Yeah, I'm an immigrant.
Well, then I'm in good company.
And it was something as simple as turn on the on switch, was that what it was, Greg?
Yeah, we had to turn this on.
Yeah, that's what, Jim has a nice way of making you feel good about yourself when you do that.
Okay, guess what, it's budget time again. Seems like we just got finished, huh? And we're back to it again. At the last Board of County Commissioners meetings, they did approve their budget for F Y fif, budget calendar for F Y fifteen. And I think the biggest change for all of us would be the fact that they've moved their approval date up to the end of May. And so as we go through, remember last year, we were at the third meeting in May, uh, third meeting in June. Then they brought us back to that last Tuesday in, uh, June and they approved the budget. But right here, you can see that they're going to anticipate approving the Board of Education, um, operating budget on June twenty, or May twenty-seventh. So we had to back up your calendar to try to make all of this work. Everything through your normal process to get the budget to the Board of County Commissioners by, uh, February twenty-eighth this next year follows your normal process. And so we'll be going through and getting started with getting everything out to our, to the different departments and having that work come back. Uh, you can see on here that we do have to sit down with Sandra and work out the, uh, work session. There will be a work session on June eighth, but then you'll have another supplemental work session here. And then we do have to schedule a couple of hearings. So we'll have to add those two dates on for you. And then we've left room in the schedule for a February work session just in case. So you have from, uh, January sixth, when you'll be getting the budget, that's the Monday. We come back to work on January second, which is Thursday, and January third is Friday. And last year, we had to bump it to Monday. So I just, hopefully with your approval, simply bumped it to Monday because coming back with everybody, um, we may have a few last minute things in the budget and brief and those kinds of things. But then you'll have it from January sixth all the way through until your approval on February twenty-sixth. So you'll have that approximate just short of a month and a half to, uh, to approve the budget, to go through everything. And that worked out for you last year, I believe. So getting all the way down through, you can see that we then go through the Board of County Commissioners on March eleventh to, um, hear what they have to say. They'll be asking questions and hopefully we will be able to get their questions answered. Uh, last year, remember, we got about eight pages of questions. We got them on a Tuesday, we had them back on Friday. We'll see how that whole thing goes this next year. So everything is good down through, but in talking with Elaine Kramer and we went through all of this, because they have to back it up to May twenty-seventh, they have crunched their timeline. And so you can see that there's two dates on here that on April twenty-eighth, the Board of County Commissioners is going to talk about preliminary directions to their staff regards to how much money will be allocated. And hopefully there will be some, some discussion about the, uh, Board of Education and how much money you'll be receiving in terms of their county contribution. But they're not going to make their final decision until May fifth. And so what I put in here for you is a work session, which you do not normally have on May seventh. It's that first Wednesday because you have to come back on May fourteenth, approve the budget. And we have, have the budget to them by May fifteenth. And then we go back down for the twenty-seventh. Now, this was going to be, uh, even worse. And so this is the lesser of two evils in terms of when they were going to make some of their final decisions because they were talking about holding off and not making their decisions until a week later. And so we had to try to get that manipulated a bit too. So your first round up through, up through March is going to be okay. But when we get to that last, uh, session in May and have to go through and have everything back to them by May fifteenth, that's why I'm recommending that you have a work session on May seventh. So that we'll have some opportunity to have some discussion, to have the superintendent work with you, to see where you want to go, to see if there's areas where we're going to have to make cuts. So when we come back on the fourteenth, it'll be done so we can turn it around on the fifteenth. That's kind of where we're at at this point in time. Um, I don't anticipate any changes, but one never knows. A lot of it will depend upon how the legislative session goes and what M S D is looking at and how much money we're going to get. And again, we won't get any final numbers. By the end of January, we should get some preliminary numbers from the state, but you're not going to get any final numbers until after the end of legislative session. So you're talking about second, third week of April. And then it's going to be bang, 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 bang for us to get all of this done. So with that, um, that's the best we can do at this point in time.
All right, questions, comments of Mr. Norris, Mrs. Allen?
You know, you, you mentioned the end of session, whatever impact that might have on our budget. And the challenge there is that it's not just when session ends mid-April. Those, those, um, figures then have to go and be filtered through M S D E. So even though the legislature will have completed their work, we won't know the true impact to us until M S D E has had their chop on it. And so I'm greatly concerned that this, um, this idea of May fifth for the Board of Commissioners giving us, um, final direction for our funding and two days later, that you're going to turn that around, um, to, to this is, you know, for a work session, and I appreciate that you've put this May seventh work session in there. Um, but I, I'm just concerned that the turnaround there is going to be a, a significant challenge. Um, and even more so, um, I'm concerned about getting the budget, the first time the board sees the budget, uh, being January sixth, because by the time Metro gets it to us, usually it's, we may not see it until later in the afternoon on the sixth. And to try to then
Absolutely.
Process it is, is, I find very difficult.
Well, and that's why we, we get not only the initial presentation on the eighth, but then we'll have that work session in there, there for you too. Because remember, two years ago, we only gave you four weeks. And so we changed that around. If we can have it ready on the third, we will get it out to you.
Well, and I was going to say, even if it's, you know, I, I don't mind because I know there's, there's a period of when you complete it, then it's, it's got to be put together and, and then get to Metro and, and get to us, um, you know, that, that we may talk about if there's a different way of, of, um, either board members, you know, stopping by and picking it up. It's the opportunity to have it over the weekend and, and be processing it is, is helpful. I'm, I'm not sure, um, I'm not sure how effective I could be at that work session on the eighth for not having seen the budget. So, um, tentatively, I can support this, but I, I do have some great concerns about it.
Understood. If I can say, my only hope is that there'll be some discussion on the April twenty-eighth meeting by the B O C C. That might give us some idea of what their thought is so that we can then start preparing for it, not knowing again until the fifth what the actual numbers are. Keep our fingers crossed.
Look, Greg, go back, I'm, I'm sorry to interject, board members, because I'm going to hold my comments to the end because I have great concern about this. I'm going to let you know, really concerned. I think Greg has said about the lesser of two evils, I'll hold my comments till the end. But would you go back and clarify when we would have our first indication of availability of dollars for the operating budget for?
From the county?
Yes.
It will be
Did you say April twenty-eighth?
I'm sure that there might be some preliminary, but they're really planning on talking about it at April twenty-eighth.
And then final direction to us on May fifth.
Right, that's going to be the first discussion.
Conversation about it, we've had discussions about a target in previous years.
Right.
Has there been discussion of that in any of your meetings?
That's what's scheduled for a
So we're going to now float through the, the initial months with the development of I've always defined as a faux budget.
Yes.
So, okay, well, I just need to understand that.
Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll reserve my comments to the end, Dr. Raspel.
Okay. Mrs. Allen, any further questions?
Well, I, I just
For the time being, anyway.
Yeah, just to put out to you, I, I wish, I wish I understood what was driving this change for the commissioners. You know, we always talk about back mapping things. You know, if, if the due date is here, what is it going to take to get us there? Cognizant of the fact that there are others who are dependent on whatever our decisions are. I, I just throw that out there as, as a, um, if, if there's a time, you can shed light on that for us. I, I would appreciate that.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington.
I think you said this was the lesser of two evils.
Yes.
Is that what you said?
Yes.
So evidently you have been working hard behind the scenes to make this better than what it could have been.
Well, the, the county budget office put out two schedules and the other schedule was a week later in terms of the impact. So they weren't going to be telling us until approximately May eleventh. And then you were going to have to approve it on May fourteenth. So that's the problem in terms of, it was going to be May twelfth, I think it was. So we actually got them to go a little bit longer where we had a little bit more time because you would have had two days.
Right, so I, I thank you for working with the commissioners to give us a few more days because it could have been worse. And usually at board time, I mean, budget time, board members have to drop everything and get to the budget, which that's something that we just do. And we just do what we have to do to make sure that we meet the deadlines. And they have deadlines, we have deadlines, so you know, it is what it is and we just have to work with it. And I appreciate your efforts and working collaboratively with them to make it better, uh, than worse. So it's better. And we'll see, things might improve along the process. Maybe you will get an indication earlier about what to be expected. But we also have to put forth the needs of the school system first and foremost.
Keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah, well, thank you. Thank you for what you've done to make it even better.
Mr. Matthews.
I'm with Ms. Washington, thank you for not bringing us the first rendition.
Agreed.
So, second thought, I, you know, I better stack up on Wheaties and Tums and
Motrin.
And absolutely, because it looks like it's going to be a banner crazy budget session.
I'll, I'll contribute, okay? I'll put in a twenty-dollar bill for us.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Corrigan.
Um, I've been having trouble even seeing my budget, but now I finally got it up. I should have looked at yours. Um, I just turned it off and turned it back off and get on. Isn't that what we do with computers? Anyway, I am under the impression that they can have that budget approval date anytime they want. That each county does a difference, is that right or is that wrong?
Yeah, I mean, there are a lot of counties, I'm used to Anna Rundle, it being done by the end of May. But everything kind of got pushed back, so everybody had time to get everything done. And it's not, and that's, they may have picked May twenty-seventh, but that's right in the middle of all of your graduation days and all of that. And so it, it gives them enough time that if they have to push it off a week or two, they can. And so I know that from the discussions last year, they were not happy about proving their, our Board of Education budget the last week in June. So this is all that push it back a little bit to give them a little more time. So if in fact, they get our answers to our questions and they're not comfortable with it on May twenty-seventh, they're not backed up to the last week in June to have to approve the budget. So it may very well be that it gets approved a week later or two weeks later.
I'll never forget, and I won't say who, in all politeness, I was going to a dinner that we all went to and a county commissioner said, I don't have your budget yet, it's late. Well, that's when I called up Elaine Kramer and she said, Maryland, there is no such thing. That's what I was delivering to you. She said it depends completely on the county. Well, then after I learned that, I thought, well, I won't get so upset next time. That's why I came to you.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Corrigan. Peter?
No comment, thank you.
Oh, you'll have fun.
Smart man, smart man.
What's matter, huh? Come on, let her go.
Well, the, the only comment I'll have based on past experiences with this, as everybody knows what they were, is that we will do the best we can with it. And, uh, Mrs. Allen, if we need some more time, I will come and deliver the, uh, the budget materials myself. If I could pick them up early in the morning, it'll give me an opportunity to drive around the county. And I'll pass them out to everybody.
Just at me?
Uh, so we wouldn't have to worry about, you know, I might pick up a few hours that way a day or whatever. But in any event, uh, Mr. Norris is doing everything he possibly can and we will
Oh, absolutely.
Continue. I want the word continuing there. We will continue to do everything we possibly can to adhere, uh, to this calendar outline. But as we know, these things changes.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, so we, we'll just deal with it. Dr. Moneron, I'll give you the last word.
I'm just waiting, thank you. So, I mean, and I appreciate it because I'm taking all of this in. I have a very strong opinion about this, nobody should be surprised about it. The budget process is an extremely, uh, important process of which this board engages in. You are the stewards of an incredible amount of taxpayer dollars. For us to give you the impression that we moved through this in a rapid, in irresponsible way would be wrong. We take this so serious. We monitor, we have a process in place, we follow the timeline and the schedule. Uh, I will talk about previous interactions. For anyone to insinuate that we have intentionally missed a deadline or that we have had something in late is completely remiss. Uh, and irresponsible for that kind of jargon and espousing of that kind of, uh, information because we follow this with a high level of fidelity. And there's a whole series of scaffolding that goes in the background to build to that level. So there has been a communication with me, with the county administrator about the philosophy behind this, which makes common sense, but also cognitively, I accept it. But also within there goes back to my words of communication and collaboration and cooperation. With those three words, lots of things can occur. So for this board, I remind us that we must also communicate, collaborate, and be cooperative. I also expect that when a change that is this dramatic for us, that those kind of expectations occur on the other end as well. And I plead for a mea culpa upfront before the process even occurs. Because for me, things don't present themselves on a nice little deadline in a beautiful little package that says, here's your amount of money based upon the instability of the state dollars over the last several years. Gone are those days where state dollars were communicated in January. And I could tell you with great confidence, I think I had two years or three years like that before it started tanking, with great confidence that I could give you those dollars and we'd have it all firmly put together and there was no vitriol, there was no tension. But I do expect that we live in the world of, where we need to have great flexibility, where we have to have a high tolerance of ambiguity. And so how many times have I come to you, one who likes to speak with great authority, uh, with definitive information, and I have to qualify by saying, board members, be patient with me because what I'm telling you at this particular time, with this number of seconds on this particular date will change as quickly as I probably leave here and get another memo from the State Department or a shift in the economic culture or climate about the state allocation of dollars. So I plead for a mea culpa and a level of flexibility and a high level of cooperation, collaboration, and communication to seek first to understand what our issues are, that when we are being told not to miss a deadline and reminders are given to us in public not to miss a deadline, I in turn expect a level of flexibility of cooperation and communication and collaboration as we're working through this because it does not present itself in a very clear, didactic manner on this date, on this date, that follows beautifully into this timeline. I understand cognitively why this is occurring. It created us great concern. I'm still, you know, with consternation, trying to figure out all of that at the end of the year, last budget cycle, why the drama associated with all of that. But the real- But the reality of all of that is, is that that took us up to that great deadline, pushed us all. I mean, we're moving, we have to have a budget in there by July 1 for the fiscal responsibility that we have to do. So, to understand pushing that earlier makes common sense. But also, seek first to understand, then to be understood, we're a busy school system. We're responsible for 18,000 young people. During that period of time when these deadlines are coming to fruition, as espoused on this document, is right in the sweet spot of us trying to work through our graduation processes. And that's an all hands on deck, as this board is highly expecting the superintendent and his staff to make certain that every child is graduating. So, great concerns are being addressed as far as making certain all that's happening. The school system is in great, high throttled activity at that time. And Greg has a role in that, and his staff has a role in that. There's a whole series of things that are taking place. So, I ask that as this shift has occurred, I understand it and I accept it. But I also expect that as we're working through it, the level of flexibility, the level of understanding what our dynamics are, and things aren't going to happen. So, as these dates are said, we may not have information as expected in a nice little tidy box with a ribbon on it. It may be that we put a placeholder in that's there for the purposes of planning to only have further information shared. It's also very incumbent upon this board to understand that I might not have things to you at the level, and it's going to put some additional pressure to turn things around. So, by all means, you know, I'll ride my bike to your house if I have to, you know, if we stay in shape, I'll do what's necessary to do that, to get them to you, as I have a little moment of some little humor in there. But this is a very important process. We never leave the budget cycle. And this change, I do expect to be implemented in a way where I expect the cooperation, communication, and collaboration to acknowledge the need for flexibility of the dynamics of which we are facing that are out of our control. And so, I wanted to make those statements be known publicly. I have a strong opinion about this, because we take this process so serious, as you would expect, when we're talking about being the stewards of close to $190 million in our operating budget. It is not something that can rapidly be moved through, that we can just let to chance. We have to have our eyes on, and so, any direction this board provides us, we recognize what that's going to do for our staff, for us to plan that process. And as bright and intelligent and as focused as our staff is, to put the extra pressure of a 24-hour turnaround, or whatever that may be, is really not realistic. So, therefore, we're going to have to do things just to make a deadline, but it's got to be cleared up and cleaned up with a level of accuracy and fidelity, so that when this board gives the final approval, that it is done with the high commitment that this community would expect, who put you in office, and who in turn put me in office to oversee this budget that you've supported and have approved. So, it causes me concern, the compression of it, that we do not run so fast that we're not getting it right, and that we're creating additional frustrations in between. But I accept it, and I understand why the county administrator has advanced this to the Board of County Commissioners, because there were a lot of unusual occurrences that have happened the last several years in June, that quite frankly, could have been mitigated if there would have been an enhanced level of communication or expectation based upon this. And I just say that at a higher platitude, quite frankly, to understand the overall process, and it's never a perfect science. And so, again, cooperation, collaboration, and communication are essential to understand the flexibility of this piece. So, I thank you for the opportunity to focus on the end of this, and it does cause me a concern, but we accept it.
Thank you.
Just one follow-up. And that would be that January 8th meeting, you had mentioned we'd likely have a work session to go over the budget at that point in time. That may be something that we want to take a look at as a board. Is that the most effective time for us to have a work session? Or even, does that date give you and your staff the time needed to deal with the budget? Or should we even be looking perhaps at adjusting that January 8th board meeting? You know, we're good about making adjustments that we need to make, and so, as time goes on and we approach that date, I would just ask that we give some consideration to what's the most effective use of our efforts and staff efforts, so that while it is a faux budget-
Right.
-it does tend to become the launching pad, and I want to make sure that we are-
If you want to follow the same process that we did this past year, on January 8th, Dr. Maran would give a general overview of kind of really the pluses and minuses, the big numbers, and what's in the budget. And then we came back either a week or two weeks later, we drilled down for you, that we really went into each of the various categories, and really talked about the people and the changes, and what we were doing for facility modifications and transportation, and where we were going with instruction and those kinds of things too. So, if we follow that same process, I think last time, Superintendent gave at least a 45-minute presentation, which would have been your January 8th meeting, and then we had, I believe, two hours for the work session that we did too. So, if you want to follow that same process, you'll get a nice 10,000-foot overview on the 8th, and then you'll get the real nitty-gritty a couple of weeks later.
Right. That makes sense.
And I just don't want to frustrate this board, quite frankly, you know, by virtue of, because we frustrate you enough during this time, because we don't, I'm always changing it, and that creates me frustration.
Well, no matter what we do, it's going to be frustrations. We know that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, as we go through this, we will tweak it as necessary, you know, there's no question about that. I think everybody understands that.
So, I will get a case of Wheaties. Yeah. Of the things that you expected, comfortable chairs and pillows and-
Milk, yeah, milk.
Don't make us too comfortable.
Yeah.
Okay, we need a motion, right, Mr. Norris?
Yes, sir.
I move that the Board of Education approve the FY 2015 Board of Education Budget Calendar as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? The ayes have it. Okay, Mr. Norris, continue. We have finance audit for FY 2013.
Just a few highlights to go through, you know, that we did meet as a committee and went through all the auditors' comments and everything too, but I think the four big things here at this point in time is that we've been given an unmodified opinion. They used to call it unqualified. They've changed some of the language, and so, unmodified is the same thing, unqualified, that we had no significant findings in the audit. And so, this will allow us to keep going without having to go through that two-year period that we did when I first came on board in 2008, and kind of dig down a little deeper too. So, that's really nice, we got an unmodified. Your OPEB assets at the end of June 30 were 25.8 million, and recognizing a current unfunded obligation of 31 million. However, when you changed over to the new premium allocation, where we're paying on a weekly basis, and we have good data for our retirees, once we have all the 13 data and all of the 14 data, and we do the actuarial study in FY 15, I predict that our obligation will go down by 20 to 40 percent, because our retiree obligation has almost been cut in half. So, that will be significant. We'll have to wait until we have all the FY 14 data, so hopefully by the beginning of the budget session, hopefully November of next year, we'll know what our new OPEB obligation will be too. So, we've got really good data, data that wasn't available to us before, when we had a combined premium with our active and retirees, and so, that's good news. And then finally, on our fund balance, 2,33,470. That's already taken out, that million dollars that you approved for that reserve account that we did. So, this is your current unfunded balance. It's actually about 500,000 better than I thought it would be, because we had some money left over in fixed charges to establish that 1.9 million dollar reserve account. And so, that's kind of where we're at. No problems with the auditors. I do need to give you a quick heads up, that the legislative audit will be coming down the pike here shortly. They must do it next year in FY 15. That is our sixth year. They may very well come in sometime after the new year here, but we will have that going on for nine or 10 months while we do all the other stuff that we do. So, just a quick little heads up.
So, you always need to understand that when you deliver good news, that you want to make certain that you try to have some separation of the bad news.
But it wasn't intended.
But the good news is, it's just an unmodified opinion, Greg.
Yep.
You know, that's a really big deal. It ties right into the fact that what we just talked about with the budget, how much money we are responsible for, for our taxpayers, and for the programs that we put in place for our students, that to get an unmodified opinion, better known as unqualified, that's the highest you can get.
Yes.
Two of you serve on that committee, and I'm absolutely thrilled for that. For that, that deserves a round of applause for you.
Absolutely. Okay, questions, comments? Peter?
No comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mrs. Croft?
It's great, the highest you can get. How higher can you go?
Mr. Matthew?
Great job, sir. Thank you.
Mrs. Washington?
Excellent.
Mrs. Allen?
It's easier to sleep at night, knowing that you and the others in finance are such good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. That is extraordinarily important. And it is by virtue of the talent there, it's also by virtue of the policies and the processes that we have in place, that I know that you are continually looking at. So, thank you for making sure that we can go forward in this way. I'm also really intrigued by the idea that additional information that you're in the process of collecting will impact our OPEB obligation fairly significantly. And I hope that that is, this is the first time I've heard this, and I know that we are doing our health insurance in a way that may not be shared across the state. I think it will be important for you, as our representative to the OPEB trust, to be talking about this with the others there. And I think there may come a time soon where, when we know more about this, we may want to be talking with Maeve about it as well.
We have a December meeting, and I'll bring that up then.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Allen. We need a motion?
I'm not there.
I move that the Board of Education accepts the audit report as presented. Upon receipt, the printed version of this audit will be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners in St. Mary's County, state and federal authorities. It will also be available at the public libraries in St. Mary's County.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Right, the ayes have it. All right, Mr. Norris, I bring this to information items, and you're right on with the 2014 September financial report.
I think the only item really on the finance side in terms of revenues is the fact that with the shutdown of the government, we're going to be behind in terms of getting any of the federal revenues. We've been notified by the Department of Defense for your impact aid monies, that normally the process starts about October 15th, and that they will simply start that process when they can, so that the, some of our impact aid money will be late in getting here, and that's okay. We're fine from a cash flow. The same thing applies to the new Head Start program. We were just beginning to invoice for that too, so we're going to be able to carry that in a cash flow basis until they can get back up and running. So, just in terms of the federal side, you can see it's not a lot of money. It's $2 million, but that's only on the general fund side. We still have, you know, we still have the Head Start program, we have the Department of Defense money, we've got, you know, Title I, we've got special education, a lot of federal money in there too. So, that's the only thing I really want to make sure you understand on the revenue side, is that some of our payments are going to be delayed in terms of getting back to us. On the operating side, there really isn't a lot to report. Everything is doing pretty good. We only have one location here. And again, remember, you see some large balances here, like non-instructional salary wages is 6 million. Don't forget that there is another round of steps that are going to be, as part of the negotiated agreement, that are going to be hitting us January, February, March for 12, 11, and the 10-month employees. So, you see that money there, as soon as we get into those steps, and what I have payroll doing is trying to work on a model that will tell us if we have any significant changes there, so when we bring our next categorical to you in January, if we know ahead of time, because we kind of distributed the money based upon what we thought, but because people coming in and going out, and maybe redistributed it a little bit differently, we might have to move salary wages money between different categories to balance it out. So, we're going to try to work on that, so in December, we'll have that data. So, when we come to you in January, don't be surprised if you see us moving some salary wages money from one category to another to balance that out. So, that's there. The only note here is, again, on contracted services up here, you can see that that number was about $360,000 negative. We have moved a little over $300,000 over to, oh, God, a different account in terms of some other side money. I can't think of the name. See, that's what's happened when you get old. Medical assistance, okay? So, we moved about $300,000 over in medical assistance. So, this number will stay there for a while in terms of being a little over. It'll stay there until we handle our categorical in January, and then we'll be able to move around. You see that we have still some significant money in salary wages, and so, that may cover that. But again, that won't happen until we do our, until we do our next round of steps too that we have there. And you can see that we do have a comment down here at the bottom to let you know what's going on. Over here, on last time, you had a negative charge over here in other charges, and that was for the vehicle. That's been moved off the books, because we're getting the rebate back for the vehicle that got burnt off. And then lastly, you see that we're still okay down here. Remember that in the group health insurance, I know that, you know, when you take a look, 6.9 million spent as of the end of September, and then you've got 9.8 left, that does not include the employee's contribution. So, as that builds up, at some point in time, we will be moving that into the account to take care of the employee's contribution. Right now, this is all SMCPS money. So, as that account builds, we get about $2 million every three months. That'll be put back in, and so, that will help cover the rest, because our expenditures last year were right around 19 million. This is 16, so that extra, extra money that goes in there should hopefully help us, so that will be squared away there. Other than that, there's really nothing else on the revenue and expenditure report, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, Mr. Norris, thank you. Mrs. Allen, any questions or comments?
No questions. Thank you.
Mrs. Washington?
No questions.
Mr. Matthew?
Good job, as usual, sir.
Thank you. Mrs. Croft?
Yes, I agree with Mr. Matthews. Thank you.
Peter?
No, but thank you very much. You worked very hard.
Dr. Maran, do you have any additions?
I'm fine, thank you on this one.
Okay. Okay, this was an information item. Mr. Norris, thank you very, very much. As usual, everything is in order. The next future board meeting, the regular board meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 29, 2013, at 5:30 PM. I want to remind the board that after adjournment, we have a work session to review some policies. So, we'll take a 15-minute break after adjournment.